May ninth, special session of the Tarpon Springs Planning and Zoning Board to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Seaman?
Here.
Mr. Kuskoudis?
Here.
Mr. Vesey?
Here.
Ms. Vehill?
Here.
Mr. Stavopoulos? Mr. Kuliyanos?
Here.
And Mr. Andrew Otis.
All right, that brings us to item two, that's our workshop session. Tonight's meeting is kind of different, it's a more informal meeting to discuss some of the issues we've had in past months and just try to develop strategies. We can't really make a lot of the changes probably, but at least we can talk about the issues and try to strategize ways that someone who does have the authority to resolve the problems could do so, and the staff can help us determine the appropriate ways to do that. I wanted to start by just asking if, would we like to set a kind of a drop dead time that we'd like to try to target to stop, because if we don't, I don't know if we will otherwise.
Eight o'clock?
Eight o'clock would be, I'd be eight thirty, let's put it this way, let's add tentative eight o'clock, and if we feel that the discussion warrants it, I would suggest that we can add another half hour to it.
Continue at that time.
That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm good with that. Is everybody agreeable to that?
Agreed.
Okay, the staff has done a lot of work to help us put the sort of agenda together, it's really more discussion topics than it is a complete agenda, but kind of the first item was board powers and duties, and was in response to one of our comments about a mission statement, and the land development code, section 227, pretty much enumerates the powers and duties, so that pretty much stands as our current mission statement. And part of that was in response to a comment about for the city commission, having a member of this board represent us to present before the BOC regarding our items, and that is already allowed based upon the staff's research. So, does anyone have other comments to make about the powers and duties and mission statement?
I, go ahead, John. I think that was one of my items. Yeah, one of the concerns that we have is that we are quasi judicial, and then the Board of Commissioners are quasi judicial. I know that we have, we have an advisory role, but I think it's, we, at times, we might pass something, but we, for the sake of moving something along, but there might be a point that we have that we want emphasized. I mean, there was a one several months ago where we passed it, it was a project that we found acceptable, but there was a couple of concerns about the backside of the project.
Recommendations.
Yeah, and we had some general recommendations, and then that got passed along to the Board of Commissioners, and we just want to, what I want is if we have that, that it gets addressed by you, that it gets addressed, not you, it gets addressed by the Board of Commissioners, that that item, even though we passed it, it's not just, oh, you know, oh, the planning and zoning passed something, you know, six to one or seven oh, it's where, when we have an observation, we would like that observation to be addressed, and rather than just passing along our vote. And sometimes there are nuanced things that are, were obviously important to us in our conversation, so that's why it may be possibly having a, where a point like that exists is either having maybe a representative from the Board of, from the Planning and Zoning be able to come to the Board of Commissioners and express that point, or whether it can go in a form of a memorandum, that, and then it's addressed by the Board of Commissioners, that point.
Just question, maybe this is to staff, when we, I know, I know what John is referring to, when we make, approve something with recommendations, are those recommendations, other than just saying the Board of, you know, the zoning board had approved this, are those recommendations are part and parcel of when you make the presentation in front of the commission, saying that the zoning board approved this with the following recommendations, as opposed to they approved it? And I think, as John said, there are times we pass something, because it, you know, we don't need them to come back again, we just had some, some things that we would want to see as part of a recommended approval, and to that, is that relayed to the commission? Because quite honestly, John, I don't see one of us having to go there every time we do something to make sure our recommendations are presented to the commission.
Yes, the staff updates the staff report, and puts a section in with the Planning and Zoning Board's action and recommendation, including the vote, whether it was unanimous, or what the vote was, and how many members attended the meeting. And then we also put another slide on the presentation for the Board of Commissioners. I will say, when I got to Tarpon Springs, we were not doing that, we were saying the Board, Planning and Zoning recommended approval or denial, and that was it, and there was public comment or not. I think as things are evolving, the last couple, last few, we have not only put your vote and your recommendations, we've said, the Board expressed or discussed the following concerns, we have noted public comment in opposition and in favor, and so we've kind of expanded that out a little bit. And I would like to also clarify, and maybe city attorney can help, I would think you would, it would be on individual applications if they want a representative to the Board, correct? In other words, if there was one in particular, it's not that you would have to appear to report on everything you see.
Yeah, you could, you could do it either way, I mean, if it's something that you want to have a representative at every commission meeting, where there's an application that's previously appeared before the Planning and Zoning Board, you could do that, or on those that you feel, you know, to Mr. Kuskoudis's point, on those that you feel maybe are not just, oh, we're recommending this, we just wanted a couple of things, on those that were, we had a very, you know, in-depth discussion about these particular things, we need to make sure one of us is in front of the Board of Commissioners to relay that information, because we're not so sure Paragraph in a staff report is going to be able to do it. So, that's something that, you know, you guys can decide, but keep in mind, if you send a representative to appear before the Board of Commissioners, that representative is appearing as the entire board, so whatever the comments are made have to be confined to the exact discussion that was had at the meeting.
So, procedurally, at the, at the meeting where we take our action, if we feel strongly that we want to have somebody there, would we need to notify at that meeting and determine who the representative is?
Right, you, I would suggest that at that meeting, if you feel like it's something that needs to go, you know, there needs to be a representative from this board in front of the commission, I would just say, okay, but, you know, you take the vote, and then let's decide by majority, you know, make a nomination, a second, and they take a vote on who's going to go, and then, you know, qualify what exactly they're going to say.
Okay, that's good, okay. Any other discussion on that item?
Chair, that went really well first, but, but I would like to go back a step, and please, we need a little bit of patience from everyone involved. I was the person that suggested the mission statement, and consistently, when I bring up the mission statement, this is the result I get, the mission statement is this, fair enough, except I don't see that anywhere. And why I am going to bring back the mission statement, and this is why I'm going to ask your patience, is that mission statements work, and I personally feel that yes, one could assume that the mission statement of the Planning and Zoning Board, otherwise is the LPA, is enumerated, we know it's enumerated, but, for example, the Code Enforcement Board reads their mission statement before every meeting, and it frankly is a bit more organic and encompassing and inviting to all the participants. And for example, any corporation, or any moderately sized business, also has a mission statement, and that mission statement isn't jargon, and it isn't legalese, which no one really understands, we know all that. The reason that I brought it up is that I think that perhaps the Planning and Zoning Board could use a little bit better flag, or a little, little bit better guiding statement as to why we're meeting every meeting. The purpose of our meeting, sure, it might be delineated in state statute, but perhaps something along the lines of, I haven't given it any thought at all, well, we're here to improve the lives of the citizens of Tarpon Springs by utilizing the enumerated powers, but more or less just reminding everyone there why we are meeting, it's not just technocrats, but maybe there's a goal involved in that. Those are just my thoughts, and we can just dismiss it, but frankly, I think that we lack that guiding principle of why we're meeting every time, and that perhaps if we had a concise guiding principle, it would help us in our complex decision-making process. That's just my opinion, we can move on. A mission statement is, can be kind of a complicated thing, and probably not best fleshed out here, but those are my thoughts on that, if anybody wants to move on, or if anybody wants to fill that out a little bit more, and if legal wants to chime in, I'm not saying that it's how we actually run our thing, but it might be nice to stand up, read our mission statement, say the Pledge of Allegiance, maybe say a short prayer, and give us a little bit of focus, and then we do our business, and with that, I'll stop on that.
I'd like to piggyback on that, yeah, which actually kind of questions what our role is, you know, and a mission statement would help, because, you know, I know that I've looked through the memorandum that Mr. Trask had provided, and, you know, it talks about our limitations and our specific role, and it, but it says that we are, you know, we are a quasi judicial board, and the commission also acts as a quasi judicial board. And I look at that, you know, what's the utility of having two quasi judicial boards? I mean, it's repetitive, are we, where it says that we are here to advise the Commissioners. If we are to advise the Commissioners, and we are not a, do we look ourselves as a quasi judicial board because the charter says we are, or are we just make recommendations to the Commissioners? Because it's kind of the way it is anyways, I mean, we have a meeting, we're quasi judicial, we make a recommendation, whether the commission chooses to follow our recommendation or not, it's up to the purview of the commission. So, you know, if we're going to have a mission statement, what's our role? And that's, that's where I think some of the, the lines become crossed and hazy, as far as I'm concerned, and, you know, you know, I've never been able to, you know, hang my hat on what we actually, what's our purpose, other than to advise the Commissioners.
If staff may be recognized.
Yes.
We could work through these, as we go through the different applications and those things, and kind of work through those, because you, you are advisory, but you have both legislative and quasi judicial items, and you are the local planning agency, we have a major comprehensive plan coming up, and those things, you're going to be more involved in those. Maybe if we work through the application types, that'll help you clarify that, and then you could, you could even come back to the mission statement, like Mr. Vesey's saying, as you start to line these things up and clarify in your mind, maybe that will help you work on a mission statement, if that's what you want to do.
We, we have talked about it before a little bit, and I'm not sure, I know, we've got a lot of papers here, I think the papers we're talking about that would sort of define the mission statement, are these two pages that are the Florida statute related to the local planning agency, is that correct from both staff and legal's perspective?
Yeah, and we've broken down on page two of the annotated discussion topics, we've basically broken down the items that you see now, and kind of, you know, laid out what governs those, and I don't know if you want to work through those.
So, to Mr. Seaman's point, for the most part, yes, it's going to be the state statute, this Planning and Zoning Board has been appointed by the city commission as the, or designated by the city as the local planning agency. Every municipality is required to have a local planning agency, and Ms. McNeese did a really wonderful presentation about what exactly that meant, I believe, a couple of meetings ago. So, that is your primary mission, is to serve as the local planning agency. How that's done is through the charter and through your enabling ordinance. The charter is set, you know, it's adopted by the people, it shows that you're in advisory capacity. To the point of the memo, it, there is some, there is information there about the quasi judicial, but it depends on the type of application that comes before you, so you do serve in a legislative function as well, but the other part of it, that, you know, what you kind of are here to do today, in my opinion, is to talk about changes to the land development code and to the comprehensive plan. You know, you guys have talked about setbacks and things like that in the, in discussion, and some of the other topics that are included here today, and I think, to Ms. McNeese's point, I think that's a good idea to kind of go through those things, and it might solidify exactly what your mission is, but your mission is pretty much set by state statute. I understand your point, Mr. Vesey, you want to put something that's a little bit more user-friendly, if you were, if you will, to say, this is exactly what we're supposed to do. What you're supposed to do is, you're supposed to serve as a local planning agency, everything goes through you, and you make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners. You can probably find a better way to say that, though.
Yeah, the, this two-page that I was looking at is way too lengthy, I mean, it's got a lot of detail, but I think for a mission statement, we would, would need to boil it down somewhat, but should we move on into the application hearing procedures on the discussion topics then?
Yes.
And kind of circle back, hopefully, at some point?
We don't have to even circle back today, I just wanted to give that one more breath of life, that, that it doesn't get lost.
Okay, well, the next kind of topic down the line was LDC changes to, and application hearing procedures, and potential for final decisions by the Board by application type, and the staff has done good research here, and, I mean, clarifies it in my mind, it's page two of three of the staff.
All right.
The, anything that's an ordinance, which would be annexations, comprehensive plan amendments, future land use map amendments, land development code amendments, zoning map amendments, and preliminary plan developments, including rezonings, would fall into a category that, that we can't be the final decision makers on, is that, am I correct in assuming that from what I see here?
Right, ordinances must be adopted by the commission.
Yeah, well, do you want to talk about annexations?
That's, we can, that's certainly something we have to talk about at some point here.
Okay, well, the reason I want to bring it up is because we have a few members of the commission here, and, and that's something I think is important, that we, we as a board, I can't tell you more often than not, we get requests for annexation for the sole purposes of accessing utilities here in Tarpon Springs, and, you know, what's become problematic is, prior to annexation, permits are being issued through the county for development or whatever, which may or may not, you know, affect, or where they would go through, let's say, the Board of Adjustment for setback requirements, or things that the city would require in certain development, that are being sort of bypassed, because the permit is done at the county level, and then we're annexing them without the benefit of the city's input in the planning process. And, and, you know, whether it's setback sidewalk, you know, I'm just throwing stuff out there, but, you know, recreation space, things of that nature, that does not give the city the opportunity to say, wait a minute, you know, these are the things that we want to see in the city, but unfortunately, the permit has already been issued, and that's just become, that's something that we continue to see, and it's not, sometimes it's not the fault of the, of the person wanting to annex, it's just that they're, they start their process, and then say, well, if you want utilities, you have to annex into the city, and, and we get stuck holding the bag for whatever the county had, had allowed them to do.
Well, that, that's, that's a question on, for staff, you know, we're often told that, that they're required to be annexed in to, to connect with the utilities. If they're required to annex in, I don't understand why it comes before us to decide whether to approve an annexation, when the applicants often say, oh, we're being forced to be here to do this. So, I, it's kind of, it's a little confusing for us.
Yeah, they are required to apply for annexation.
Or required to apply, but not, they're not required to be annexed.
And Renee can expand on that.
Hi, hello, everybody, Renee Benson, Planning Director. So, the ordinance that you're referring to is actually under a utility section of the code, and it was adopted in, I believe, 2006, and it does require, it requires that the applicant annex the property, and I actually just recently had a conversation with Mr. Trask, again, about this section of the code, you know, and it says, and meet all, it doesn't say codes, it said, meet all existing city requirements, and I asked Mr. Trask point-blank, what does that mean? And the point-blank answer I got back was, I don't know how to interpret that, it doesn't say codes, it doesn't, the other thing that it does not say is when. So, we have a very broad gap between what's required and how we, how we actually administer that, and there's nothing right now, you know, that prohibits an applicant from doing exactly what they're doing. If they want to start their process and then come to us, there's nothing statutorily that we can do to stop that. So, absent maybe an interlocal agreement with Pinellas County, and that's a, and I will tell you, going into local agreements with Pinellas County is not an easy thing, especially with regard to annexation, is, you know, but if that's the direction, you know, that we get from a policy standpoint, we can certainly try to go down that path. So, right now, we've got, you know, an absence of any specifics in the code, we're administering this the best that we can, and the way that it has been administered in the past, and so, you know, you have, you apply for the annexation, you know, our code actually says we can refuse them service, I honestly don't know if that's legal to do that, that's not a question.
In my policy, you don't do that.
No, absolutely not, so, I mean, we've never gone back to somebody and said, you didn't do X, Y, or Z, we're going to refuse your service, so, I would have to defer to the utilities, but, but the code does say that, so whether or not that's legal is a question that I cannot answer. So, my point is, there's a broad gap in the, the way the code's written, and so, that's why we're left with what we're left with.
A question about a potential fix, and I realize the fix is, is well beyond our jurisdiction, so it's just a general question that somebody else would have to pick up and run with, but if there is a defined planning area for the city of Tarpon Springs, correct, and it takes in any property that would potentially come up for annexation, correct?
There is a defined planning area, it's the interlocal agreement with Pinellas County that recognized the planning area is, is, has been expired for probably 10 years.
But in, in others jurisdictions, I've seen this be the case, and it's not in Florida, so I don't know if so I don't know if it would work with Florida law or anything else. I'm way above my head there. But, anything that was within that, that city planning area had to go, the people had to at least be notified that they were going to have to comply with the city's requirements when they did their project. And they were notified of that at the very beginning. But, that would take a joint agreement. But, I mean, that would be the right way to fix it, would it not?
It, it would, it would be, it would require Pinellas County basically saying, we're not going to allow you to go through our process. You need to go annex and go through the city's process. I mean, we would need that kind of a bright line distinction, which we simply do not have now. And I think the only way that that could probably take place would be through an interlocal agreement.
Because, you know, we're looking, you're, you know, one of the things we're looking at is a comprehensive land use plan. And, and if you, you could annex something that's completely contrary to what your, what your plan may be because they've applied for utilities and they, they weren't part of our land use.
Um, I, I would say, well, if they've got, the normal process for annexation and when you're, is that when we annex a property in, you have a couple of options. They either, you know, we, you typically assign a land use designation that is the same or less intensive than the county. So, that's, that's required. And, and same thing with the zoning designation. If for some reason you don't have something that meets that, or if they want to do something else, they're trying to do a, you know, something, go from, you know, residential to a commercial, they can't do that in the county without going through a land use and zoning change. So, my point is, when we, we're required by, unless they're actually applying to amend the land use and zoning, you know, to change it substantially from what it is to something more intensive, we have to bring them in as something substantially similar or less intensive. We also have the option, we've never, I think we've only done this in one instance with the McAlpin property, I believe, whereby we didn't actually have the same land use designation that the county did of, of a half a unit per acre. And so, we annexed it in and we left it in as the Pinellas County designation. And it was, now it was changed at some point later. But, you have the option to do that, to simply say, you need to stay the same zoning as what is in Pinellas County. We've never done that approach with zoning. We have done it with land use.
What, what about density? I mean, you know?
Our, our densities are very similar. I mean, that, that, the land use establishes the density. And they're between Pinellas County and, a little bit of history, because we had for years the requirement that, we had a countywide plan. And so, that dictated the future land use map categories that every jurisdiction had to have in the city. Now, not, not parcel by parcel, but we all had the same land use map categories. Residential suburban, two and a half units to the acre. Residential urban, seven and a half units to the acre. There's a whole litany of them. So, if you're in residential low in Pinellas County at five units to the acre, it is virtually identical to residential low in the city of Tarpon Springs at five units to the acre. There is no difference. If they wanted to increase the density, then they have to go through a full-blown land use map amendment.
In Pinellas County?
In Pinellas County.
Which, let's, assuming they go through the Pinellas County, and that's something here in Tarpon Springs, we would have maybe looked at a little bit more differently. And, and so, there it gets, it gets approved by the county, come into Tarpon Springs, and the density's a lot greater than we as a city would have maybe allowed. But, you know, the thing is, our choices are limited with, because we have to supply utilities. We could deny them annexation, but they're still there. They're still going to build. I mean, the city's going to lose its tax revenue if they don't annex and just get higher utility fees.
And so, you know, typically what happens is, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I, I just don't, you know, you, you get the individual here and there and, and they, you know, the land use and all that stuff may be over their head. They just know they need to annex who's building a, building their own home. But, I could see, and not that we have a lot of space for developers anymore, but I could see developers taking advantage of the, of the benefit of going through a county process to get what is best for them and not necessarily best for the city of Tarpon Springs. And we have no choice because we're, we're off, we've got off of the utilities. I don't want, looking at somebody to try to backdoor their way in to whatever they're trying to do in the city, in the city of Tarpon Springs.
So, we're, we're, we're talking about nonconformance, right?
Essentially, yes.
Okay, so they're, they're bringing in nonconforming properties. And then, is that something that, and maybe that's a question over on, i- is that something that we could, should be concerned about and take into consideration when we make our decision? Because it, it looks like we've gotten some of those.
There, it, it depends upon the, the type of the nonconformity, you know. And, and frankly, I mean, we always make sure that the applicant is keenly aware, you know, if you do this, you may be nonconforming when you get into the city of Tarpon Springs at the end of the day. And so, if something happens to your property, you may have some very detrimental impacts to deal with because you're not going to be able to rebuild in the manner that, that, that is there. We, we make sure that applicants-
Odds are, those odds are small that somebody's house is going to fall down.
Right, right. I mean, in, you know, kind of circling back to Mr. Kuskudis's, you know, point about, you know, density and things of that. If a project is adjacent to the municipal boundary and the county is considering a land use or den, or den, or zoning map amendment for a project, I'll check. But, I'm 99% sure that we get notice as the adjacent local government. We do.
Okay, but it's one thing for notice.
And we can show up and protest it if we don't like it.
Okay, but-
We have.
Well, that's, that's actually good to know. Because, you know, I, I just, I just don't want to see somebody trying to take advantage of the system. And, and, you know, that's, is-
I agree with you 100%. There are developers out there that will density shop. And I saw it here. And I saw it when I worked for Pinellas County. And I will tell you, I mean, right now, because of the people that I know at Pinellas County, and I see something go through and I just watched it happen, I won't talk about the case, but I saw what they did in Pinellas County and I picked up, and I knew they were going to turn around and come right to us. And that's exactly what they did. And, you know, I know what they did. And, you know, I know they're density shopping. And so, we very much discourage that. Unless for some reason we think it's a good, you know, that, okay, maybe that makes sense in our case. Maybe it wasn't good for Pinellas County. But, that, obviously, those all come to you, you know, at the end of the day, so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't really think we've seen a case where the density varied much at all.
Shouldn't.
What we have seen is significant variation in setbacks in some cases. And, and if I remember correctly, significant variation in lot size in some cases.
Some, in some cases, yes.
And there was a case very recently where, where there was neighbors that were concerned because the setbacks varied a great deal from, from what their setbacks did.
And I would tell you that they had, and that case is pending, so I probably shouldn't talk about it, so.
If, if I may, Chair, I'd like to pull, pull back the, the perspective a little bit. And, and I just want to draw back a little bit and just share my personal experience on the board and the annexations we faced from being very large Highland Lakes to very small, more recent, is that, and I don't want to speak for everyone else, but I do want to speak for what I understand, is that we are consistently reminded that we don't have a choice. This is how I interpret it. That if they apply and they're adjacent, we must rule yes. That there is no other standard. And this comes back to this concern that you brought up, which is that, why does it see us at all if all they have to do is ask and all they have to do is be adjacent? Why is there, why does it even see the board? Because we're often referred to, forgive me, and we're told, if it meets those two boxes, I know there might be another box, but it's not relevant, is that as long as it meets those two boxes, we're nearly required by our guidelines in 227G that we have to say yes. And I think, and I'm only going to speak for myself, that we're continually frustrated and go, why do we have to say yes? Why does it see a board of human beings that might think otherwise on that? And that's just one point. I want to bring that up and I don't want to speak for you. And then I think to myself consistently, because we've seen these over the years, is that why is that standard so incredibly low and the risk so high for the city? That adjacency is the only real hurdle that they need. And then, and then the city is left on the hook in perpetuity forever to maintain these Highland Lakes as an outlier of our community forever, that perhaps the core residents have no interest in supplying that. So, that, that's my concern, I don't mean to speak to you, is that I think our annexation process is broken completely. And the standards are far too low. And that I'm not concerned about going through a, an interlocal agreement. How about we just say, if it's not in the best interest of the city of Tarpon Springs, that's it?
Mission statement.
Wow. Dude, I laid that out for you and you picked it up. Thank you so much. So, and, and I, and I want to go back one more thing. I want to refer back to Highland Lakes. And I know that's probably not the right designation and that was a big thing. They checked all the boxes. It was a beautiful application. And it was obvious to anyone that looked at that, that that developer shopped until they got the last 40 feet and were able to snip up a little piece of property. And so, the, the adjacency was a minuscule portion of this overall development. But, they waited and waited and waited and got it. And they were able to say, they were adjacent and now we're in. And it, the whole thing smelled like fish dogs. And I'm not sure what happened with that. That's not my concern. But, here's what I am concerned about, is in 20 years, Mr. Smith, if he's still with us, is going to propose a rate increase because we had a main water line break or the road flooded out there. And now the city's on the hook. They're taking care of this 100 homes that we put out there. And I'm a little bit out on my pipe right there, but that's my concern. And I'll end my concern about, oh, that's not the end. Why can't we make a modest change to our annexation requirement so that there's at least a modicum of, of challenge to it in the best interests of the city? That would be my suggestion. Done.
Mr. Chair, might I be recognized?
Yes.
And so, there are, for purposes of this discussion, there's two kind of different types of annexations that we're talking about. One is the utility section of the code, that is, the city requires the annexation to provide services. If you, as the Planning and Zoning Board, want to recommend a change to that section of code to the commission, by all means, you have the power to do so. Voluntary annexations that are done by statute, you do not have the power to change those criteria. Those are promulgated by the state legislature. If you want those to be changed, that is something that you need to contact a representative about and have them bring it out in the state legislature. I understand where you're coming from. Perhaps the city attorney and I can look to see if the commission wishes to do so based upon your recommendation. If there's anything else that we can make that more stringent, I don't believe the statute will allow us to do so. That's kind of been preempted by the state. But, that is kind of why you're getting the three checkmarks that you're allowed to look at. Because that is, one, a quasi, excuse me, a quasi judicial decision. So, you're only allowed to consider those three criteria and the evidence presented against it. And two, it's out of your control because unless it's the utility portion, and then it needs to be addressed by the code, otherwise it is designated by state statute.
And forgive me, help me understand that fine line between the statutory and the nonstatutory.
Uh, the nonstatutory is that the city's code has, as Renee had said, has a provision in it for hooking up to services. So, if you are provided, if you are being provided services, my understanding is that it's, if you're not within the city limits, it's at a higher rate. Once you become adjacent to the city, to use your word, you are then required to apply for annexation into the city. Because if the city's going to provide services to you, it wants you as a part of the jurisdiction. And so, then the city, when it finds out that there is this adjacent property, goes out and says, you need to now come annex into the city. And here are a different set of criteria. It's still under the statute, a voluntary annexation. It's not mandatory. It's only mandatory because the city has said, in order to continue receiving our services, you have to be part of the city.
And if I may, and Renee, I know you have some thoughts on this. I want to just take this one more step. So, let's say that we have that application, but that application is a completely nonconforming project by which our entire Planning and Zoning Department, whole goal, in my opinion, is to create conforming projects. But, yet here we're going to bring in, in some instances, a blatantly nonconforming project. And what I'm hearing is, we don't have a choice.
No. What you heard was, this is the perfect example of your job as the Planning and Zoning Board underneath your enabling ordinance to find something in the land development code that potentially could be addressed and make a recommendation to change that to the Board of Commissioners so they can address that. You heard Renee talk about, you know, in speaking with Mr. Trask, that some of that language in there isn't very clear about when they have to meet city standards. Well, what does that, what does that mean? Does that mean the code? My under, my understanding, too, is that you do have a large land development code overhaul that's coming to maybe address some of these issues.
One, one thing that's a, that's a sticking point with me regarding the way that that ordinance is written. If you want to make, if you want to, where Mr. Trask wouldn't go is telling me what that, all city requirements, what that means. Well, until such time that you actually process the zoning, now I know what I'm recommending. We're recommending, you know, R 78 on a particular project as, when it comes in. And what we do is we look at, we look at the lot size and we look at the adjacency of what the city zoning is in the area. And we have to make a recommendation as to what the, what that property should be brought in as, knowing that it may be nonconforming with what is in Pinellas County in their zoning. But, my problem is, I can't tell them, you have to meet something that doesn't, is not in effect yet because they're in Pinellas County. So, that's my chicken and egg problem that I have.
Renee, is there, and this is probably for the commission, you know, a modification of the ordinance that says if you're, you know, if you're, and this has to, they have to be aware of the county, if you're going to be applying or requesting utilities from the city of Tarpon Springs, you must comply with their building requirements.
Oh, they do.
I, well, they get the permit.
The building code is the building code. Does the zoning setback, so the only thing that vary, okay, I just want to make sure we're on the same page.
Yeah, you must comply with their, with the requirements of the city, whether it's setbacks or whatever. And that way, before you get your permit to build, you actually have to, you have to run it up the flagpole with the city.
But, my, but my problem is, I don't know what the actual zoning that eventually is going to get approved will be. I can, I can say, I think I would recommend this, but until you actually go through a rezoning hearing and apply the zoning, it doesn't exist. So, there, that's, that's the, that's the real problem with the way the ordinance, with the, with the ordinance.
So, what I'm hearing is from these two incredibly smart people that have a grasp of every detail, you can't give us a recommendation of how we can improve our annexation guidelines?
Let me say this. Well, so, and I'll defer to the city attorney on this question.
And change it to what?
What I think you could do is, within that section, you can state that, you know, in the instance that a property becomes nonconforming upon annexation, that they must apply for appropriate variances through the Board of Adjustments so that they can become conforming. Again, they may or may not get approved, but at least you've recognized that there is, you know, a nonconformity.
So, and maybe to simplify this, what I'm hearing is that's a section of code that you all would be interested in changing. I would suggest, if we have a majority or consensus, that that's something that you would recommend that change. And, and I would definitely want to get the Planning Department's input on this. Like, maybe they could draft some suggested language like Renee has said, and then bring it back to the Planning and Zoning Board. And then you guys can take a look at it and then make those recommendations to the Board of Commissioners.
Oh, oh, can I, yeah?
No, John.
Tough on that side. The, so Renee, so maybe you could help us. It seems like you, I can infer from some of your expressions that you have some of the same concerns we do, right? And some of the same frustrations of being able to identify what some of those things mean because they're written broadly. So, maybe you could help us with some of those recommendations for ordinance changes?
I, I would be more than happy to, yes.
The things that frustrate you, okay, that you can share with us. Because it seems like we have some of the same types of frustrations. And then the other, I had one more, it was a two-part. And the second is, you, you mentioned a concern about when, right? You said, it doesn't quite say when. You said, it doesn't quite say when. So is it a concern? I mean, when we, and this might be a legal question as well. When we make a decision to say annex, can we qualify that decision by saying, we agree to the annexation upon, let's say, completion of the CO from the county? So that we're not in the middle of the, we don't get stuck in the middle of a process?
Yeah, that, you can't really condition the annexation on that.
Mr. Trask, I had reached out specifically on that question last week. And he indicated that you can put a, a effective date of the annexation.
Right, but not condition it on a specific.
But an effective date upon completion of CO with Pinellas County. We could do that, yes.
But not a condition, yeah, not necessarily a condition.
Yeah, and that way at least we're not stuck in the middle. We don't have to, our staff doesn't have to go into a middle of a construction.
Right.
Process. And now take over stuff that you haven't, of which our, our inspectors haven't even seen.
I do want to say this, just from a, from a practicality standpoint. We've done this, you know, before. Starting permits in Pinellas County, you know, and then we accept those permits. They get turned over to our building department. We pick up where they left off with the, because we're all under the, under the, you know, the Florida building code.
Right.
We're generally, there's, there's, there's not really a missed beat between accepting a set of, you know, plans that have been approved by Pinellas County and bringing them into the city. I just did want to get that into the record.
But it's your time. But it's the city's time.
Well, but we're also going to, they're going to pay for those inspections though.
Who, who would be responsible, or who would be the party that could ask to have the inter-local agreement done with Pinellas County? Because it, while it doesn't necessarily solve every problem, it seems to me that it solves a lot of them.
We could add, there, there's a formal stat, isn't there a formal statute for how inter-local agreements for annexation have to take place? It's a very formal process.
And it would have to, I mean, and I would think that it would start with the city attorney's office and staff to try and figure that out. And then it would likely go before the commission for approval. But that would be after negotiating with the county and the county management office and.
There's like a request to negotiate, you know, a particular type of agreement and then they have to formally respond. There is a state statute that kind of rolls through that process. So, you know, it may be worth an informal, you know.
At least a discussion with the county.
Discussion with the city, I would probably say the city attorney's office.
Oh, yeah, well, yeah, definitely with us first.
Yeah. I'm sorry, with the city and the county attorney.
In the meantime, is this the time for a motion, Chair?
No, no official action is to be taken at this. This is just a workshop. I also wanted to say.
So, but that's what I wanted to hear and I didn't mean to interrupt. So your suggestion of a motion for a review or a change of the ordinance should be made at the next posted meeting.
At your meeting, correct.
And that would be action on this. So if I heard this correctly, and forgive me for interrupting, is that in regards to annexation, it appears that the most prudent path right now would be that this board's requests, or makes a motion for a request of the change of the ordinance for annexations. And then that's moved forward to our board of commissioners.
Perhaps. I also heard something, Mr. Seaman, about looking into an inter-local agreement. So I would say at your next meeting during board discussion, in your ordinance details how that happens, at your next meeting during board discussion, you guys have a brief discussion on, you know, directing staff to look at, you know, revamping the ordinance or discussing the issue of an inter-local agreement with the city attorney's office and bring that back to you guys at a later date. And you can certainly do that the next regular meeting.
And, and I think another component of annexation, even at the, I don't even think the county law, the county even requires it, is a sustainability component as well. I think that, I think, you know, we look at our utilities and expansion of our utilities and more use of our utilities. You know, I always ask the utility department, is that, you know, do we have the capacity and the sustainability to, to bring on, you know, additional, you know, based on our system? I know we do, but I think it's an important component. And I think it's a, it's an important component that it, that it be asked.
So procedurally, I do want to, again, let you know that when something is going through permitting in Pinellas County and they don't have the ability to serve it with their own utilities, they require that the applicant obtain a utility availability statement from the city, you know, to ensure. Because they're not going to give a permit to something that can't be hooked up to utilities, whether it stays in the county or it gets annexed in. So, and then just, you know, holistically, you know, we do have, you know, we plan for the Tarpon Springs planning area, that larger area that Mr. Seaman was talking about, you know, from a utility perspective. And we're, you know, there really is, you know, there really is no concern about, you know, potable water and sewer service with our, with our main plants. Where you, where you may end up with service issues is the downstream of how does it get there? Or how's it, you know, in both directions. You may, you know, so, and that's where the developers need to be on the hook for whatever downstream impacts are. Do you need to upsize a sewer line? Or do you need to upsize a water line? Those types of things. You know, so from the bigger picture of the plant capacity, you know, the wastewater treatment plant, the RO plant, we're in very good shape, you know. Just, just want to put that out there.
Thank you.
Well, I think we sort of have a plan to, to move a couple of things forward at our next meeting. Hopefully, if we come on down this page a little ways, the one, one really interesting thing that the staff did tell us here is that we could be the final decision makers related to conditional uses in site plans. Because those are resolutions, not agreements or ordinances. Am I correct in that, Erica?
I'm sorry, Ms. McNeese was speaking to me. Can you repeat that last part?
The, we, we could be allowed to be the final authority related to conditional uses in site plans, correct?
You know, based on a reading of the charter, I don't believe so. And keep in mind that this also says, subject to applicable charter provisions. Unless there is a charter change, the charter is quite clear that the board of commissioners has appointed the, the planning and zoning board to advise the board of commissioners. So you are a purely advisory board.
But what he's, he's saying is, by law, we could be if, if the ordinances are changed.
No, if the charter is changed.
Charter, excuse me.
Right, so it would have to go out to referendum and it would have to be voted on by the people. And I, and honestly, I would have to look at the city's charter, how to, how to change the charter provision if there's a specific ordinance on that. Because I, it's different in every municipality. So it may have to go through the board of commissioners first before, well, it definitely does before it gets placed on the ballot. And if they don't pass the ordinance to get it onto the ballot, then it never sees a, a public vote. So, there, there is a way to do that. Suggested charter changes are done by the charter review committee, or they can be done by petition by the residents, or the city commission can choose to, to talk about a charter change. But this board doesn't have the ability in its enabling ordinance to suggest changes to the charter.
That's a pretty heavy lift, Chairperson.
Yeah.
Probably too heavy for what we want.
That would, that would require, and, and, you know, they do periodically revise the charter. So I guess that would be one of the things that, that could possibly come up when they do revise the charter.
Right, it's, I believe it's on a five-year schedule. And to my, my former associate, Mr. Perez, did represent the charter review commission the last one. I, my memory is getting a little rusty. I want to say that this did come up at the last charter review session, series of sessions, and it was not changed. So that would be something that the next charter review committee could certainly take a look at.
Yeah.
And Chair, what, refresh my memory. What, what's the advantage of having the P and Z board be the last stop for conditional use in site plan? Is that a simplicity? Is it a streamline? Is it, we're saving the BOC?
It, it streamlines the process. It, it, it takes a little bit of stuff off of the, the BOC's table. Lord knows they've got enough. But, you know, and it, it reduces the issue that we have had at times in the past where we felt like the, the BOC was not listening to what we were saying. And we were putting a lot of effort in on things that, that, that were ultimately overturned.
Would that, if I may, continue on that. Would, would the workaround on that be the representative at the BOC meeting at the, at the top of the page? Would, would that be helpful? It's not ideal, but perhaps that would be a specific reason to have a representative from the board at the BOC in regards to those? Would that help?
That, that does help. And that's why on the, on some of the larger issues particularly, that I think we'd be well advised to have a representative there. Okay, well, the next item is the hearing process for large developments, which is, is something we've, we've had some of in, in recent months. And I think BOC has discussed at a workshop, April 21st, requiring future land use map amendments be held, heard separately from applications for other approvals on the same property. Now, my question for staff and our, our attorney, does, is that saying that it has to come to them separately? Or would it have to come to us separately as well?
The, the intent was that it would be separate for you as well.
Separate for us as well, okay. And just kind of as the devil's advocate, does, is that going to address kind of all of the situations that, that we could think of where we might have a large project come in? I mean, I guess if, do we ever have large projects come in? I can't really think of one offhand that, that changed anything, that, that didn't require the future land use map amendment.
Oh, I really don't want to talk about that. I mean, it's point, point blank, yes. The Anklod Harbor application did not have a future land use map amendment, with the exception of taking the, moving stuff into rec open space and preservation. It didn't require a land use map amendment for the project itself.
Yeah.
So that's a bad example right now.
Well, it's part of my example. Because for me, it's the completeness of the application. And, and one of the things, and I'll use that as a specific example, where as a board, we're presented the application and we, we base our recommendation on the application. And to have an applicant, if you want to call it a document dump, whatever you want to call it, however you want to term, I think is fundamentally unfair that that is not, and maybe this is a, a message to the commission, that that is not revisited. Because whether or not we approved it or disapproved it, to receive an, to me, it was deemed an incomplete application. Because a lot more information was provided than it was in front of the zoning board. And, and I think my ear was that, you know, why even come in front of us with an incomplete application and just save your complete presentation for a commission? And, and that's, and that's the thing that stuck to me on that. Not whether it was approved or not approved. Is that we were not afforded the opportunity to ask the questions we needed to ask.
And, and I agree 100%. As a matter of practice, you know, and I've spoken with the city manager about this, you know, that has stopped. If, and we are now, we are telling applicants. Now, I think this is something that perhaps needs to be codified and made much more clear. Because right now, we're just telling them. But we are telling the applicants, you know, what you're going to planning and zoning board with is exactly what you're going to the board of commissioners with. Treat it with that same respect. Because you're not going to be given a chance to supplement or amend the application and not go back to the planning and zoning board. So that's a matter of practice that, you know, when working with the city manager, he agrees with and we are doing. It probably is warrants a code amendment, you know, somewhere down the road to make it absolutely ironclad.
So how does that process work? And when does that process work?
That process is already working.
I'm just curious. I mean, that, I'd love to hear ironclad.
Well, oh, to get the ironclad, that's a code amendment. That's a code amendment.
You just did one, a couple of meetings ago. You saw it. It was denied. It was withdrawn because the code is the way it is. They had to withdraw it, reapply, and you saw it again with a different plan.
A complete plan?
Well, it addressed some of your concerns.
So, so what I'm hearing, and I'm just going to pull it all together, is that Renee has said that discussion happened with city manager. Now they're supposed to be doing it. Now it might be codified, or is it going to be codified?
Yeah, no, I think, well, I think there's two different things. One, there's not a process statutory in, in our codes now for, help me out with it, Erica. The, you have the ability to approve, approve of the conditions or deny.
Or deny, right.
And there's not a, yeah, you can't continue something.
There's no continuation or rehearing. There's no, there's no rehearing of an, of an application.
It's, and so what, what the city attorney has told us, that if they want to now change the application, her opinion is that they should actually have to withdraw it and reapply. I'll be honest with you, I don't 100% agree with that. I think they should be able to amend an application. But that's something that, that's the statutory part that I think needs to be cleared up.
And I agree, they should be able to do it. I just don't agree that's what your code allows you to do.
So, so we all agree with that?
Yes.
And forgive me, so, and, but that's just tacit conversation and verbal agreement. So how does it move beyond that? Is that already moving beyond that? You may have already told me once.
No, I mean, if you guys want to make that recommendation, again, same with the annexation.
I think the sticking point is where it does, it doesn't say that the, the record can't be supplemented moving between the planning and zoning board and the board of commissioners. That's the verbal arrangement that you're hearing right now, the commitment that we're not going to do that. So, and we've done that on two different occasions now in the last three months. So we've told the applicant, you got to go with what you've got. You can't supplement afterwards. You can roll the dice if you want, but that's what you're stuck with. Otherwise, you need to withdraw and start over again. So that's where, that's what we're doing as a matter of practice.
Remember, legally, if you're saying that that's just policy, but legally, they would have the right to, to supplement. The board, but the board of commissioners has the power to say.
Send it back.
We're not hearing it.
Exactly.
You, you introduce new material, we're, we're not hearing it.
So the option is, just like the annexation conversation we just had, at your next regular meeting, you can during board comments suggest that staff go back with the city attorney's office and revisit that section of code. Make those suggested changes and bring it back to you. And that way you can get the ball rolling on making the suggested changes.
So what we're, what we're saying is, and I think maybe the, the whole punchline to this whole process we're doing today, is that we are able to dance now, we need to be able to dance well with the board of commissioners. That we have some fluidity to us, that they actually listen to us. They actually listen to us. And, and, and that we, that, that we are in concert together. Because again, in the, in the past, we feel that we have not been in concert together with the board of commissioners. And we're just like an island on our own. We do, we, we, we vote on something and it's lost in the, in the history of, of Tarpon Springs. And somebody can go back and see what we did, but it doesn't seem to ever be brought up. So that's, I think, what we're, all this is about, is, is that we can be, have a, a more fluid process. And that, that our, our hard work, because we do really hard work, and all due respect. We get a, when we get a, a project that comes before us, you know, we don't have, they have a lot more on their plate than we do, right? The board of commissioners have a lot more on their plate than, than the planning and zoning. So we might just have one thing to talk about. So we'd talk about it for two hours. They might have 15 minutes to talk about it. So our two hours, we uncover a lot of stuff. I, I truly believe, and you mentioned Anklod Harbor. I truly believe we did an infinitely more exhaustive analysis and, and questioning process on that than the board of commissioners did. I mean, it's without saying. And again, that's what we want. So we're looking for, whether it's codified, whether it's ordinance changes, if, if in the interim before we can do all those things, at least we have an understanding that we can kind of just dance well together, right? Thank you.
In the, the hearing process for these developments, and I, I don't know how to accomplish it. You guys know more about how to accomplish it. But I, I see with this, the separating future land use map amendments from, from all the other approvals. And on projects that involve that, it helps. But give some thought and and help us with what could we do to make sure that anything is significant as the as the Anklod Harbor's project? And and it's not necessarily gonna be residential. It could be commercial as well. But any kind of really large scale projects, I personally feel like need to come to at least two meetings with us and two meetings with the BOC somehow or other, whatever, whether it's separating a rezoning from a site plan or whatever mechanism it is to make it work. I I for one would would not vote on all four things in the case that we voted on the first time on that particular project. I I would be against at least a couple of the items probably just because it's it's too much to deal with it at one session.
I I'll I'll chew on that one. I think there's some ways, you know, beyond just the separation of land use and zoning that gets to your to your point. Let me give that some thought and we, you know, that that's.
Okay, I I appreciate it.
Chair, could I could I backtrack just a moment?
Sure.
So that I'm clear, because sometimes I'm not. And I I want to backtrack to resolutions, the topic of resolutions, conditional uses and site plans. And then if I heard correctly, Erica shared that by her reading and understanding that this board cannot cannot review those or be the final stop for those things. And I just, I just want to go back to that because that was a kind of an important topic. And is that what I hear, that that that's a no starter? That we cannot be that way?
I think without a charter revision.
Without a charter revision?
Right, because the specific charter provision states, it's the last section, section 12, I believe. Yeah, it's highlighted.
And why why you're looking, just because I
Says, "The board of commissioners shall appoint a planning and zoning commission to advise the board of commissioners on issues concerning land use and other such powers as may be provided by law."
Okay, so at the last sentence of resolutions, Florida statute 166 is 0.4, "A resolution is an administrative in nature and need not be adopted by the governing body."
Correct.
Okay, and then below it is bulleted, conditional uses and site plans. So what I'm reading is saying that those can, those are administrative only.
Correct, but you do not have the power except to advise.
In regards to those administrative items?
In in regard to anything that comes before you. That's that's what, that's the charter provision. So that's the overarching umbrella. That's the linchpin here, yeah.
10-4.
So what I think what
And it's not that I want it, I just want to make sure I understand and we didn't skip over some of these important topics.
For us to have, if you want to call it teeth in our recommendations, right, there's gotta be changes to charter to allow us to have that ability to, you know, to be definitive in in some of the decisions that, you know. Because right now, like you like you said, we're just an advisory board.
Right, right. Other than what we just covered in site plans is that in regards to what you brought up, is we're getting incomplete applications and we're forced to review those. So now that's being addressed in a different manner via possibly codified in ordinance once we recommend it, that the site plans have to be complete before they come before us.
Yeah, you know, like for example, let's say we vote six to one to deny or or to or 7-0 to deny an applicant. It goes in front of the commission. They could vote by majority instead of, you know, let's say you wanted to make it a super majority. That has to be changed at the charter level.
Okay, so and then I'm gonna change gears again real quick. Is hearing for large development? And and I know we've been through that. Once or twice a year, we're dropped a package, even if it comes a week early, that's got three, sometimes four, but we'll just say three. And I'm just repeating what is already done. And each one of those is wildly complex. And I think the feeling of this board was, we want to see those one at a time. And there were some comments that maybe that's possible, and I know it's inconvenient. Is is that how I understood that, is we did not want to see those together again?
Well, I mean, the problem there becomes how long we delay people. What I was talking about really was taking a a case that has four parts to to one case and hearing all of those parts to that case on one on one night.
Because we'd get the annexation and then the land development agreement. And then a guy like me looks at that and goes, well, it sounds like they assume everything's gonna be approved because they put that all the way through.
And it's, I mean, I personally think it's kind of a disservice to the developers too because they spend all that money doing site plans and everything. And if we don't approve approve the rezoning that starts the process, they've put all that money and effort into the site plan for nothing. And, you know, I I, so I think, even though it delays them a little bit, but if you're talking about where we have three big cases on separate items at one night, it's it's kind of hard for us to avoid that because we're we're not allowed to delay these people, right?
No, I don't, I think Mr. Vesti is referring to one project that has three or four applications. Same thing you were referring to.
There are even ordinances typically, is that it's broken into an ordinance, whereas, whereas, whereas. And I don't want to speak for anybody else because we we haven't had one real recently.
I mean, you know, and I I do want to caveat, if I could, just, I mean, again, annexations are a little unique because we have to assign a land use and a zoning. So trying to separate those out could be problematic. We need to do a little analysis on our own and see how we, how that might, if that's something that you're that you're interested in. The the plan developments are the ones that are really the ones that are sticky because a plan development is a zoning category in and of itself. And you have to have a site plan, a preliminary plan development that is locked up with that that rezoning itself. So they're kind of one in the same. So those really can't be strewn apart. Now, you could definitely, if there's a land use amendment, you can make them do that first. That land use map amendment's gotta stand on its own face. Is it, you know, does it comply with all the other goals, objectives and policies of the comprehensive plan? Is it a good idea to change it? Yes or no? Okay, yes. Okay, now you can go, now now let's talk about the site plan and the zoning or whatever. You know, those types, I think that's what you're trying to get at.
It is, it is. Thank you so much because you said the key words. Is it compliant with the comprehensive plan? And we we were seeing stuff before we've even met that. So what would you suggest in an ideal process for those rare but complicated? And if I may speak for the people that aren't here, really, they impact our citizens so big. You're so polite and nice. And I'm thinking, I I'm not concerned about if it takes four more months for the developer because the city of Tarpon Springs is stuck with it forever. And we can take some time to really get it right. So I'd be interested to hear how we can make that process work.
I don't want to try to do that on the fly tonight. I'm thinking about it. I don't want to get ahead of my skis, I think, is the, or out over my skis.
Out over your skis.
Out over my skis, yes.
So we don't have an idea for that? Does anyone on the board have an idea? Merle, I know you've given this a lot of thought. Other than, because what I don't want to see is this stuff to be tabled and we go two more years down the road and we're still seeing four ordinances. What can we do tonight?
I think like Renee said, she she brought up situations that I knew existed but hadn't even thought of where where you can't separate the zoning and the site plan, at least the preliminary site plan.
Right.
Now, in those cases, there is a final site plan review, but
And and that's a good point. The final plan development? Kick that out, you know? That that doesn't have to go on the same night, you know, that can be moved out. So I could, I mean, we can look at from the things that make sense for them to travel together. And we can strip out things, you know, or, you know, and put in processes that hopefully can give, you know, the, I guess the one caveat, you know, I need, I need to think through all of this. But if you're trying to separate out every process into its own meeting night, now you really are delaying things for a long time, so.
And you're also gonna get into some due process issues with the, on the behalf of the developer. So if it does get challenged and they've got a better leg to stand on and overturning whatever decisions you fought so hard to to make.
Well, and and there's some intricacies to deciding which projects are, fall into the category of large projects too, which I would probably defer to you guys' expertise.
I don't know if there's a way and if if we look at the way the ordinances are crafted, if there, we can provide some sort of discretion of, you know, regarding times and travel of of applications. But we, I don't, you know, we need to think on that and and see if we can come up with something that meets everybody's.
So we wait patiently and hope for maybe a couple of good ideas?
Oh, I'm gonna get my direction, trust me.
And this goes back to, because we
It does.
Obviously, you're empathetic to our thoughts and we are. But it's still, well, I'm gonna use a fancy word, it's still just tacit knowledge. And until it gets codified, when, if you're not in the office that day or you're not there that week, and then it's it's just gone. So I I want to see it move away from just conversation.
If I were sitting in your shoes, I would want the same type of posture that you get in Pinellas County. And I'll just say this, if you're in the, if something is a project in Pinellas County and it has to have a land use or a zoning map amendment, and you go through and you get a staff recommendation to deny and you get a planning and zoning board recommendation to deny, rarely will you ever see them even try to go forward to the board of commissioners. And that's the type of, now, they're advisory only, you know, that, but it's a different relationship, I guess, I want to say. And that's what we want to get to. We don't want applicants shopping the application through just in giving things lip service, so.
One more, just minor. The conditional uses, a couple of years ago, they were always coupled to site plans. That was was broken apart and you've had a couple of conditional uses come before you before the person invested in the site plan, which is good. We can, you know, if that's something, we we could certainly encourage that to happen more. And we do tell people now, hey, you might want to get a read on this by running your conditional use. Then you're gonna come back for your site plan. You had one, two recently, actually, so, which will come back to you with the site plan. So that was one code change I'm glad that we made, that the applicants are happy with.
Okay. Let's see, where are we?
Sustainability.
Okay, I think we're at board identified deficiencies.
I think we missed sustainability.
No, we didn't, yeah, we did. We missed sustainability, okay. We're at sustainability.
Where where is the sustainability committee at as far as coming up with their criteria? Because it says in here that they're fairly advanced in the drafting of the sustainability action plan. And I don't know what that means.
So they are, they are in process of just that. They're developing a sustainability action plan that ultimately will have to be reviewed and adopted by, you know, as and really kind of become city, you know, policy document.
Okay, how how would that with regard to this committee? How does that, how how do you see sustainability recommend, you know? Is it a, they go make a recommendation? Is somebody's gotta go in front of the city sustainability committee before they come into the planning and zoning?
That has, that really hasn't been, I mean, that's a really a policy decision as to, you know, whether or not, you know, and and I guess I would say, you know, again, we would want to be looking at things that are, you know, permitted uses by right or in kind of one bucket. And then these other more nebulous things like land use and rezoning, things that really have to apply the comprehensive plan as part of your, you know, your analysis. You know, those are the things that you, you know, there may be a policy direction to, you know, to look at that sustainability piece. I can tell you from a matter of practicality, we fully intend to wrap the sustainability action plan either as a reference document or direct integration with the comprehensive plan. And as well as whatever comes out of that that needs to, you know, to further inform land development code amendments. So I feel like that's something that will get addressed in time. We're just not there yet.
I'll give a little bit of background. I believe I brought the sustainability topic up. I happen to know Paul Smith and I was surprised to find out that that board was put under his purview and that there is a new dedicated sustainability staff member.
Yes.
I didn't have the time to reach out to her, though we exchanged some emails. And I asked some of these questions very low key about, to Paul, and I had a conference call with the two of them. They are in analysis paralysis, I'm just gonna call it the way that it is. A 20,000 point document that they inherited from somebody else. And I was like, whoa, I'll get loose here. I said, hey, how about you guys just weigh in on whether something is, according to your board, sustainable or not? He's like, we're not gonna do that. So this is what's strange, this is what strikes me strange. And I'm gonna read this sentence. Sustainability board input on project review. So we got the sustainability board that's been in action for at least a year, maybe longer. We have a new dedicated full-time staff to do sustainability stuff. But the sustainability committee currently has no review authority or standards of review for development projects. Not just currently, they're not going to in the future. They have, and this is how I understand it. They have no say in development review at all, not even as like part of the TRC. That's how I understand it, correct me if I'm wrong. In other words, an entire development, 150 homes, PUD, sustainability, doesn't even look at it. They don't know whether it's sustainable or not. Now, I know that Renee said, well, we're gonna wrap that into the comprehensive plan, but our board right now is gonna miss that boat and it's not probably gonna be part of that. I'm gonna judge whether it's right or wrong.
Because there are no criteria in place at this point.
Right.
And don't know when there's gonna be criteria in place.
Right.
So how, you know.
They can't even come to the party. I could be wrong, tell me that they are.
It's very difficult to ask a board to review something when they don't have any codified regulations about what something, and it's not in our codes. That's, you know, so to me, the sustainability board is they're very much to drive policy that then gets into our comp plan and our and our land development code so that it's not a matter of whether or not the board reviews it. It's a matter of it's in our codes and it has to be done. So that's a little bit different. That's my kind of interpretation of it. Now, I could be wildly off, but that's kind of, that's my thoughts. So, you know, asking them to review something that they have no criteria for is
Right, go ahead.
They have been looking at the comprehensive plan and the land development code. We've been to a few of their meetings. They want to make recommendations on on development review that then would be in standards if that those codes are changed and you all and us would review for those standards. You know, limit the turf in a subdivision, things like that. They could write a regular, you know, they could recommend that, it could be adopted. And then the standard would be there, whether they sit as a review board is
I think the question is, Pat, that that at what point in time are we looking at integration of a standard that the staff has in place that it can look at before it makes a recommendation? Because what you're saying, what I understand it is, we won't get a separate, the sustainability committee recommends approval. We're gonna get, the staff has reviewed it for sustainability and staff recommends approval based on the staff's criteria. At this point, there is no criteria for staff to look at. Am I correct? And and so moving forward, are you, is the sustainability committee looking at six months beforehand they have something? Six years?
I can't answer that.
I I I know that.
Right.
But but, you know, that, to me, sustainability is important. I mean, it 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 is with regard to, you know, how we see the environment of our of our city. And and whether or not, you know, we're we're reaching buildout. I don't care how anybody paints it. Even though you may repurpose property, Tarpon Springs is reaching buildout. And and, you know, we may be a useless board at some point in time because there's nothing else to build or nothing else to to go through.
You'll never be useless.
I know, I just, but 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 I I think sustainability is important. I just, I just
And and I think, you know, I think there will be an opportunity, you know, where
I hope they're watching, by the way.
Where if there's, if there is, you know, it's a big redevelopment project. You know, they may come up with, you know, things that are performance driven. So if you do X, Y, and Z, you can get a benefit. performance-driven, so if you do X, Y, and Z, you can get a benefit of X, Y, and Z. I don't know, tie it to density or something like that. But there may be instances where it's not a bright line, and maybe something does need to go, get referred directly to the planning and zoning board, maybe certain-sized projects, maybe, you know, need to go through, you know, but I do think that that needs to be, you know, a little more fully baked than, than right now in order to, to do that.
Well, I'm half-baked, that's why I brought them in and wanted to get them right on.
This is a little off-subject, but it's one that was brought up at one of our little breakouts at the end of our PNC meeting. And I think it's something that none of us really understand. When we get the, at the bottom of a, of a ordinance recommendation, it says, staff approves or staff denies, right?
Recommend.
On any project, right? What does that mean? What, who is staff?
That is the planning department.
Okay, and when
Well, let me qualify.
Go through what, tell us so we can understand what's your process.
So when I say, when it says staff, typically 99, if not 100% of the projects that come through these review processes, site plan, conditional use, whatever, they all go through our technical review committee, that is laid out in, in our statutes as to who sets, you know, who those people are. So they're representatives from every department, including planning. They're, everyone's reviewing it for their area, area of expertise, if you will, you know, roads and streets, stormwater, sanitation, you know, utilities, you know, all those folks are reviewing site plans, rezonings, everything, you know. Sometimes they don't have, if it's, if it's a land use map amendment, you know, they may not be overly concerned about it because it's not, it's not a plan, nothing being built. But, but they do, everybody does review it. Then if all of the questions have been reviewed and answered and responded to, then it can move toward the first public hearing, which is planning and zoning board. So the technical review committee is, it's a technical committee, we meet the, once a month and we review projects. Then it will come to the planning and zoning board. That's where we take all of that, staff, the planning department, all of us very, you know, play in this, you know, we take all of that information and we compile the staff report, and we recommend, you know, approval or denial or approval with conditions, and provide it to you based on the evidence that, that we have. Does that
Well, okay, so at the very end, it's ultimately you that says, okay, I take all this data and then come up with that.
I mean, you want to say me as the planning director? Sure. I mean, but Pat writes staff reports, Caroline, Ally, we all, you know, you'll notice on the next round of staff reports who the drafter is, but yes, I'm reviewing everything before it goes out the door.
And this, you weren't around when this issue came up. But, you know, obviously, we had an election, and that election was a pretty transformational election, I think we could all say that, right? And the trust that exists in these processes, I think, were in question. And, and I, and Pat, you know, we talked, and I mean, we had, and you weren't here, so it has nothing to do with you, but you know, in a situation of, that I was involved in, where Thursday, a report goes out, staff approves, Friday morning, staff denies, or, or retracts their approval. And when things like that happen, and there, you know, could have been a political bent on that, and that's the stuff that
Okay.
I'll talk to you, I'll talk to you over a cup of coffee. But, but it's, but the point we are, I think the whole point of all this is that we have, again, like when I keep using the analogy of dancing, like that everything is smooth, and that we all need to have a mutual respect. We want the respect of the Board of Commissioners, you need the, you want the respect of us, so that when we see it says staff approves, it means something to us, and we just don't, oh, well, we're just going to go read it. And that, that was like the least impactful thing that we, that we saw, because we want to have that confidence as, because it's important, because you guys do a whole lot more work than we're capable of doing on reviewing a, 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 a project, you know, we can't do all the things, all the different little things that you guys are doing for weeks before it comes to us. So we, you know, and so, I, I'm, what I'm saying is, we all need to kind of get a confidence level with all of us, you to us, us to the board, and that we, and I think that's what the citizens are looking for.
I fully appreciate that.
I, I brought up the, the same item, sort of, in, in my question about it, and, and I really honestly don't have an opinion, whether it's good or bad. The, the recommendation, the staff recommendation helps me sometimes, but at the same time, I wonder sometimes if, because we don't, obviously, in, in recent history, we've, we've not always agreed with the staff recommendation, and, and I wonder sometimes if we're doing a disservice to the people, the applicants, by giving them the impression that their item is likely to be approved, because it's got the, the staff recommendation for approval, when we don't agree with that. So, and like I said, this is purely for discussion, but I, I have wondered some whether it should say, this, this item, or this application is complete, and, and we feel, and staff feels that it meets the criteria, or this application is not complete, or, or something, but without actually stating approval, just kind of giving the, the information of how you feel about it, sort of, but without actually recommending approval, perhaps.
I don't know how you would word that, but
It's going to, it's going to be different in a legislative versus a quasi-judicial context, too, because in a quasi-judicial proceeding, the city is a party to the action, you know, like in the memo, much it's like a courtroom. So they, they come out one way. They might come out the same way as the applicant, but they, they got a position and they, they're, they're there to present the evidence. You know, you made a comment that sometimes you don't always go with what the, the city staff recommends, and, you know, we've talked about that. That's, you know, that's exactly what your job is, is to take theirs, you're not there to rubber stamp it, you're there to take what they have. Now, keep in mind, city staff's recommendation is based on the, all the information that they have at the time that they make their staff report. We all, everyone in this room knows that when an applicant gets before the board and they stand in front of a microphone, more information comes out than they've probably supplied to staff. And, and so, I hear what you're saying. You want the words recommended, approval or denial out, and just say
Something less.
Something less than that, yeah. They, they had, they submitted a complete application.
And I would say for things, I mean, things for like site plans for permitted uses by right are the ones where I really think that those are kind of bright lines for me of, you've met the code, this should be approved. Conditional uses, land, a land development, or land use map amendments, rezonings, that's all, while some of those are even quasi-judicial, there's still, there's room there, and, and those are the ones that I think that, you know, if it's a huge project, you know, it may be more than appropriate to present all the facts, especially if it's something that's going to change the face, and say, we're presenting everything, it appears to be compliant and meets all, but, you know, we can temper those. I mean, I'll just be straight up and tell you, we have one coming up at your next meeting that we are choosing to not make a recommendation on. Just telling you that.
And, and we've seen that before, and I think, too, that that's not necessarily a bad way to go, because remember, the planning, the staff report is the city's position on the issue. And, and I, you know, I think Renee was hesitant to say expertise, but I, that's exactly what the staff report is, is it's the city's experts, people who are, that have the specialization in those fields, giving you the most information that you can from the city's perspective, to make sure it does meet all the codes, to make sure it does meet all the, you know, the comp plan and the vision for the city. You take that, and then you take all the other evidence that's presented by the applicant, especially in a quasi-judicial, and then you make your own determination based on the criteria. Or if it's legislative, you make your own determination based on what's best for the city, you know, and what you, what you feel you can recommend to the Board of Commissioners. So I, I think if the, if the staff feels strongly that it should be approved, or it should be denied because of the certain criteria, or because of whatever, from a legal position, it's not needed one way or the other, but from a practical position, it may be something that you want to have. And then if staff doesn't feel like they can go one way or the other, I think that should be a staff-level decision that they should be able to, to make. The board dictating how staff should present that, I don't necessarily know that that does anybody any good.
Well, and
And I think it oversteps this board's authority to
And that wasn't my point at all.
No, and I understand that.
Like I said, I'm not even sure I have an opinion on it, but I do feel, I feel bad for applicants sometimes, and I shouldn't, I suppose, but I, I can't help but feel bad
Well, you're human.
For an applicant who has a positive, I do it because for 25 years, I was on the other side of the table, making those presentations. And generally speaking, if I had a, a positive recommendation from the staff, I was going to pass. And I can't honestly think in 25 years of a time that it didn't go that way. And so, when there's, if there's any question about whether we could pass it or not, I sort of feel bad for them when we, when we turn one down, that they really came into the meeting expecting to have approved.
And we do try to, you know, prep our applicants, you know, through the process that, look, this is, this is, you know, this is a recommendation, planning and zoning board makes a recommendation, you know, you're not final until you get to the Board of Commissioners. So we, we do try to, you know, properly inform them of that, that just because we're recommending, and we do, we do get the errant phone call, oh, you're recommending approval, I don't need to be there? Yes, you need to be there!
Oh, they don't come, yeah.
And sometimes they still don't come, but, but yes, so, no, I, I hear you on that.
Real quick question, what's the time lapse between each one? So like you're saying, our next board meeting, we have something that you've already done. Was that done within like the last month, the last week, the last, because I know like the next one for the Board of Commissioners to the Commissioners, it's usually two weeks that they go without
Yeah.
So what's the time lapse on each one?
Unless there's something overwhelmingly driving, you know, and we do try to work with, with, you know, developers, if we, if they're trying to get due diligence and they've got a timeframe on a contract, we try to, we try to move things through, good, bad, or indifferent. And so generally, it's my policy to not turn things around, you know, like go to the planning and zoning board. In the past, I've seen us go to the planning and zoning board one night and literally flip them the next night, Tuesday night, and go to the Board of Commissioners. I hate doing that, you know, and it's not my policy, you know, unless there's, unless it's some extraordinary circumstance, I don't like to do that. I don't even like trying to turn it around for the next week. The policy right now is, if you go in May planning and zoning board meeting, you're probably going to be on the first meeting in June with the Board of Commissioners. Now, having said that, I have an exception of that that's coming up, that, you know, because it's just, it's a time-sensitive issue, and we're trying to get answers, you know, whether, just good or bad for, for the applicant, so.
Now, the reason I ask that is just because it's the consistency of what's being presented at each board, from you to us to anything. If there's so much difference in, in each one that's getting presented, are we giving them too much time in between each one, or are we giving them?
Oh, I see, you're so, like, a difference in what, what the applicant is presenting to you versus when they get in front of the Board of Commissioners, and maybe they're making a different presentation?
And from even what you've seen.
And that gets back to the, to the conversation we were having earlier about, you know, we have now made it a, you know, a, a policy that, you know, and with the city manager giving me this direction to do so, that what goes to the planning and zoning board cannot be all, unless you guys say, please do this before you go to the Board of Commissioners, they shouldn't be supplementing the record with new information going in front of the planning, to the Board of Commissioners. So we're hoping to stop that, that, you know, that practice that has gone on in the past.
Well, I'd like to see it consistent between all three of us, from you guys to us to the VOC. I, I would like to be consistent with all three of them, because I don't like hearing that you guys are getting evidence and then we're getting totally different stuff that you guys haven't even heard of, that you are like saying you're recommending it and then not getting it.
Well, if they, I mean, if they dropped a piece of evidence at the planning and zoning board that we hadn't seen at all, I mean, we kind of play those by case-by-case basis. I mean, if it's, you know, again, if it's something, new information
The other thing, too, is testimony is, is hard. It's not concrete evidence, it's testimonial evidence, and then you have, you know, Pat mentioned members of the public, if you've got an affected party that stands up and says something, the applicant has a, has a right to rebut that. So that's something that maybe staff never even heard, because it didn't come up. There's no affected parties at the staff level.
Oh, well, I mean factual things, not emotional things.
No, no, and, but let's be clear, some of those emotional things are facts, and some of that is relevant competent substantial evidence that you have to take into consideration. Albeit, having sat on this board for several years now, a lot of it is not, but, you know, some of it is, so that you do, you do get a little bit different than what staff gets just because of how the process works.
Well, I, I've seen, Pat, you've done that before. You have, no, you, and this is positive.
It's like I did not do that, no.
No, you, you have, no, you've pointed out to us, when an applicant brought some information, you could have said, we never saw this.
Okay.
You've, you've said that before. And so you've brought it to our attention, when information is being brought by an applicant, that you made it clear that that wasn't something you guys saw in making your recommendations. So I'm just, I'm giving you kudos, you have done that. I think you've done it on multiple occasions.
Not trying to cut anybody off, but it's, it's 10 after 8. Some of us could
I make a motion, we go till 8:30.
Okay.
There's no official action, so you could just discuss amongst yourselves about going to 8:30.
Don't make a motion, we go to 8:30.
We're, we're out the door at 8:30 then.
Can I, can I follow up with something, kind of on the flow we're talking about here? So when, you know, we have a, some big stuff coming up in the structure of, of the city, right? We have a comprehensive plan that's being revised, we have a strategic plan that I don't think we've had in some time, if ever, right? And then we're having, the land development code is being revised as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So as, and as projects are coming up here in maybe, we'll say, the 11th or 10th hour of that process, does that go into any of your consideration that, that we haven't got to that point to know where we're, where we're going on a project?
We don't know what we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know where, we don't know what the big picture is to be able to make an approval of something?
It concerns me some, but I'm also not excited about just trying to put a moratorium in place to stop the normal course of, of business. And, and I've, you know, I've, I kind of have to defer to the Board of Commissioners on that, you know, and from a policy perspective, is, you know, do, do you want, I guess it boils down to, do we think there's going to be monumental shifts in the comprehensive plan? You know, I mean, to, to Mr. Kuskudis' point, we're, we're approaching build-out, you know, so, you know, I don't think that, you know, you're going to see monumental shifts in the plan. What I'm hoping that really comes out of the plan is a very clean, clear-cut plan that provides really good guidance versus what we have to go through now. So, you know, I, I, I don't really know how else to address it.
Well, yeah, I, I mean, I'll give you an example of, of one that came up before, and I, I think I was the only no vote on this one. It was a, a, a project that was going to be, that I think is being built on Pinellas Avenue, and the, I think, the Pitcha Penny.
Okay.
Okay, so the Pitcha Penny, and the concern I had was, you know, that they were going up towards the sidewalk, right? And I think the Board of Commissioners actually kicked them back a little bit, which was one of the things I brought, but I think they did. But anyways, they were going right up on the sidewalk. And my, my question wasn't that they were going to be, my concern wasn't necessarily they were going to be on a sidewalk, my concern was what, you know, we have on, on Pinellas Avenue, we've got businesses that are back, set back, and we got a few older ones, like Chris's Pharmacy and stuff that are on zero lot lines, right, they're right up on the, on, on the sidewalk. So the, you know, the question was, what's, what's the vision for that street?
I have an answer for this.
Yeah, are we, do we want them up front, or do we want a mix of up and back?
So, so I would, my, my short answer is, we have a vision, it is on the street, and that, that, that was the adopted special area plan and the SMART code that was adopted for the downtown and the Sponge Docks in 2011. And that went through two years of public input, and it is a policy document in and of itself that kind of overrides the comprehensive plan. It's its own little special comprehensive plan for those areas. So yes, that, that is the vision. Now, it doesn't mean that vision can't get changed, but there was a lot of, there was a lot of input, and there was a focus group that met for two years to put that, that plan into place. So for me plan into place, so for me, it's a vision.
Those things are, it's, it's, it's all part of a strategy or, or a vision, it's not just one piece of property deciding.
Right.
It has to fit into.
Correct.
Into something of a bigger nature.
Yes.
Thank you.
Chair, in the remaining time, I have a couple of additional questions, and it has to do with this very fine document that staff prepared. On the memorandum from attorney number four, bottom of the page, what is a special planning study? In other words, number four says, "To conduct special planning studies as directed by the BOC." What is that?
It's a very good question, that's verbiage that comes directly from your code. I don't know what that means.
Nobody knows, fine answer, I'm gonna move on, because I got more.
But when the Board of Commissioners directs you guys to do it, we'll know.
Okay. So this, the Planning and Zoning Board, this is just a workshop, is in essence the LPA, the Local Planning Agency, we get told that a lot. The LPA is defined by statute as, in quotation, "The agency designated to prepare the comprehensive plan or plan amendments required by the Community Planning Act," end quotation. So, prepare the comprehensive plan. So we're undergoing a big comprehensive plan review right now, I don't know a thing about it, never come in front of me, we don't talk about it.
You're going to.
That's terrific, and forgive me, but this is what strikes me as unique, is that we're supposed to be driving that bus. And I know we have staff to do that, because we have lots of things to do, but it strikes me as odd that that appears to be one of the number-one purposes of our board, but yet it's so distant from us, and frankly, other than this meeting, that we were even told maybe we shouldn't have, we're supposed to be driving that bus for changes to the comprehensive plan, but we've turned all that work over to staff. And, and I know you want to comment, but I have a couple more to do, and I'm running out of time, so go ahead, actually, let us know, how are we gonna be involved in the changes to the comprehensive plan, which is supposed to be our job?
We had a mission, we probably.
God, he's gonna drop it again.
So throughout our rounds of public input, we actually will be coming back to, to this board specifically for this next round of, of pub, of, of fact, fact-finding and gathering and opinion gathering and everything else, so we're working on that, what that is gonna look like.
Okay.
And we'll be coming, we'll, in fact, we may even just try, rather than trying to piggyback on one of your regular board members, we'll probably try, boards will probably try to schedule a special meeting with you to do that. You will also be, you know, the reviewing body and recommending body for the entire revisions, it has to come through you. So the language, and I think I'm right on this, the state is, pretty much comports with state statute. What, what has happened here, as in most municipalities, you have a planning department that, it doesn't say that, but we, we really do that, and with your assistance and your reviewing authority before it gets to the Board of Commissioners.
When do we see our, when do we see our first draft, so we could redline you? Kidding, okay, let's move on, because I want to do a couple more, that's a good answer.
Starting to get your dry humor, Mr. Vessi.
Thank you. So staff in the memorandum, second, last paragraph, page 3, another topic was TRC, and council said, you know what, we're not supposed to be at the TRC, which makes some sense, except that on 163.3174, we're gonna move halfway down the paragraph, and I'll read, "All local planning agencies shall provide opportunities for involvement by applicable community college boards, which may be accomplished by blah, blah, blah. Membership on technical advisory committees or other appropriate means." So what I hear in one, which appears to be Florida FS statute 1.63, it's actually saying that we're supposed to be membership on technical advisory committees.
What, can you point me to exactly where you're reading?
You know, there's not a, so it's parenthesis 1. Oh, I'm sure, it's not page numbered.
No, no, I'm, I'm on, I'm on the Community Planning Act, I'm on 163.
And I could be interpreting that wrong.
Can you just point me to where it says?
All local planning agencies shall.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I got it.
Two more sentences.
It's attachment 5.
It could be the reverse, that, what they're saying is the LPA can be made up and is encouraged.
It says you're, the local planning agency shall provide opportunities for involvement by applicable community college boards, which may be accomplished by formal representation. So you're talking about a college board, a community college board, being able to participate on TRC.
I, I get that, move another sentence, "Membership on technical advisory committees." I just read this as, is in juxtaposition where you said we shouldn't be on the TRCs or attending those meetings.
Right, and keep in mind, it says, "All local planning agencies shall provide opportunities for involvement by applicable community college boards." That's it, "which may be accomplished by formal representation, membership on technical advisory committees, or other appropriate means." So it's talking about, "The LPA provides opportunities for involvement by community college boards to be on those committees and the TRC." It's not talking about the LPA is on those things, it's talking about the community college.
It's semantics, I'm glad you put it out, but I just picked it up.
It's grammar, it's the commas. As a lawyer, as a lawyer, every comma and every period means something.
I read it four times, and I was still there.
It all means something.
Okay, and then I want to go back, forgive me, I, this is my last one, back to 227.00, top of the page, the annotated discussion topics, there's not a page number, annotated discussion topics for the workshop, and this 227 lays out us, G3, "To make recommendations to the BOC regarding amendments to the official zoning atlas, conditional use, and site plans." Okay, I want to key in on this last item, site plans, "To make recommendations to the BOC regarding site plans." I interpret this as, if a site plan is provided to us, we can recommend to the BOC at that application, any changes we would like to see to that site plan.
No.
But it says right here, "To make recommendations for amendments to the zoning atlas, conditional uses, and site plans."
Correct, but not applications for a site plan, I need to see that.
What other site plan would there be? We don't have site plans.
So there's two, you're talking about two different sections, you're talking about, remember, when you're, when you're reading code, you need to read it as a whole, so you are given the power to, "Conduct public hearings for the purpose of reviewing, commenting, and recommending the Board of Commissioners matters or amendments related to the comp plan." Okay, "To make recommendations regarding amendments to this code," awesome, "To make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding amendments to the official zoning atlas, conditional uses, and site plans." Okay, so that's the one you're talking about, and then it says, "To conduct special planning studies as directed by the Board of Commissioners," we already decided we don't know what those are. So when you're talking about making recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding amendments to the official zoning atlas, conditional uses, and site plans, the way that you're doing that is how it tells you to do it in your, in your procedures, which tells you that you can make a recommendation by approval, denial, or approval with conditions, because then you have to go to the site plan section of the code and read how that site plan is done and how that process is done. So you are given a power and duty here, that's 100% correct. Now, the other thing that you can make recommendations is on the LDC, so you can go back to that same site plan section of the code, and you can make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners on how to amend that, so that you get a better site plan when you're looking at those applications for site plan approval. Does that make sense?
So, yes ma'am, go ahead.
I think I can help. So where it says, "To make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners regarding amendments to the official zoning atlas," that's one thing.
Yep.
You're re-changing the zoning map from this to this. You can make a recommendation on conditional uses and a recommendation on site plans, it's the, the amendments, the amendments is not placed in a good spot.
It, it's the structure of how site plans are presented, or how we accept site plans as a, as a mathematics, or as, as.
Here's your application for a rezoning, the change to the zoning atlas, you can approve, deny, or approve with recommendations. Here is an application for conditional use, that's what this section is saying, here's an application for a site plan approval. And then your, your rule, your other, the other procedures laid out in the code tell you how to do that, that you can approve those applications, you can deny them, or you can approve them with conditions.
Can I, can I, please.
That confused you.
Because it doesn't say "application" anywhere in that.
You're 100% correct, it doesn't say "application" anywhere in that.
Okay, since we've got six minutes left, can I, I want to bring up one thing, just so we are, so it's, just something that is germane to all that we do, right? And a, a once former Bright Commissioner once asked the question of the city attorney on the Board of Commissioners, is, when we get to the review of evidence, and we have, that it has to be relevant, competent, and substantial, and that the question was, does an opinion?
I'm sorry, guys, remember, we're at a public meeting, so any side comments also need to be on the record, because otherwise that can be a violation of essential.
I'm so sorry, he was politely telling me I can't read.
If you could make sure that that's on the record, I would really, I was kidding.
I think this is critically important.
Go ahead.
Okay, that opinion alone does not, even from an expert, does not meet the standard of, alone, merely the opinion, does not meet the, the standard of relevant, competent, and substantial without the evidence to back up that opinion. So you can get, you know, the smart, you can get, we can get Elon Musk in here and ask him a question, and if he doesn't have the support in documents, or the, has not done the research necessary to answer that question, it does not constitute relevant, competent, and substantial information, an opinion alone, because that came up, that was a huge issue with that big project that we dealt with before. And, you know, things like, like traffic and stuff that we didn't, again, if we didn't feel like we got.
I understand.
The information, the backup, and only merely an opinion stated, oh, is, do you think it's safe? Yes, that, that doesn't do it, right?
I'm gonna defer to the city attorney on that one.
Well, and keep in mind, when you're talking about an opinion, especially when you're talking about in light of the law, an opinion is one single statement, "I opine as an expert X, Y, Z." Now, my testimony can be, "I spent 103 hours surveying, you know, alternate 19, you know, at all times of day, you know, over the course of a six-month period, and during that time, this is what I observed, these are the calculations that I made, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera." Maybe I don't have a piece of paper in front of you that says it, I probably should, but that testimony is the, the relevant, competent, substantial evidence I'm presenting to you to support my blanket opinion.
Correct.
And, and I, and we've talked before, I know you have testified in court as a forensic, you know, expert, so you understand that, you give an opinion, and then you have something to support that opinion.
You have to be able to stand up to cross-examine.
Correct, correct, and that is why in a quasi-judicial setting, that cross-examination is very important for procedural due process, because the other party has to have the ability to question those statements that were made. So yes, 100%, I agree with exactly what you said, opinion is not in and of itself enough, but an opinion is a single sentence saying, "I opine this way, this is why I opine this way." There's your, there's your relevant, competent, substantial evidence.
And, and so anytime that anyone comes up before us with an opinion, it's gotta be backed up, and if it doesn't meet our, our judgment that they didn't hit that, then, you know, we can make a decision one way or the other, so I think that was important.
Mr. Vessi, one thing I would like to, you know, you were talking about, you know, recommendations regarding a site plan or something, if there's something that you feel strongly about, that you wish the developer would consider, there's nothing wrong with putting that into the, into the testimony and saying, "I would really like that you consider this," and we'll make sure that gets carried through, you know, but it, it's, you know, but usually it's gonna be at the developer's whim on some, if it's something way outside of the, the norms of the codes.
And, and for that, it would have to be the board as a whole to make that single recommendation, so.
Did that with that.
Right, exactly.
Where we asked them, if they would.
Would you mind?
Would you mind, you know, going back to the drawing board, do a couple of things and come back?
That's right, and if they say, "No, sorry, I don't want to do that," then that's it, and then you make your decision based on that, but if they say, "Yes," I'd be happy to do that, then.
Yeah, it's just often too late to really.
Yeah.
Make significant suggestions and.
Well, and keep in mind, and I, I've said this in, to, to the Board of Adjustment as well, I understand that you guys want to be helpful, that's not really, I hate to say, it's not really your job, you know, they've gone through a process with staff, and what, and staff has probably helped them make those same kind of decisions, and whether they choose to do that or not is going to ultimately be up to them. Your job is to take what they give you, and then you certainly can make those recommendations or those conditions, but your job is to take that and not make it work for them, your job is to take it and say, "It works, it doesn't work."
But I, I understand that, but sometimes it's a matter of, you want the project to succeed, and for us to vote for the project, we want to see these changes.
I agree.
And, and so, you know, otherwise it's just a blanket denial, and we don't want to sit there blanketly deny somebody, because we, we want, we want to see certain changes or recommended changes brought forth, we don't want to delay the, delay the applicant, or, or, you know, you know, cause problems with the applicant, but there's things that I think, as board members, we see benefit the city, and I'll use the example of the fence.
Yeah.
That, on Live Oak, where they were, developer was, was building those, those condos along Live Oak, and our entrance into City of Tarpon Springs, off of Live Oak, was somebody's backyard, and, and we talked about a nice vinyl fence and had recommended, and the developer had a problem with it, but those are the things that we would have denied, you know, because of not having, you know, and we passed it with the recommendation, or the suggestion.
The rendering.
The rendering.
At the Board of Commissioners.
Yeah, and, and those are the things that I think helped the developer, knowing that, that they've gone through our process, we've not, you know, just trying, trying to be helpful, and I think we, we should be helpful, that's part of, our, our job is to be helpful.
I'll say on a legislative application, 100%, I'm right down with you, on a quasi-judicial application, it is always gonna be my job, doesn't matter what you guys actually do, you guys make your own decisions, but it will always be my job to step in and make sure the record is straight, that you guys are only supposed to use what, you know, the criteria. So I, I am always gonna be the naysayer when you guys really want to be helpful, because that is what my job is, whether or not you guys heed that, or whether or not you, you make your, your recommendation based on something else, I, I'm not the decision-maker here, right?
Individually, we can, we can say, based on what you've presented, I, because I can only speak for myself, I can say, "I'm gonna vote no, unless you want to pull this thing back and go do your own thing."
You can do that, but I will tell you, on a quasi-judicial application, if you vote no for that reason, and that's your finding a fact, and they challenge it, say, say the Board of Commissioner says, "We want to do it all for those same exact reasons," and then they challenge it, that, that decision is likely to be turned over if it's not, if it's not supported by the fact that it doesn't meet the criteria.
Well, when, like the case of the gentleman that wanted a zero setback, and we're like, "I can't vote for a zero setback."
But that was a conditional use.
That's, yeah, that's.
Right, and we were allowed to do that, say, "Okay, I cannot, I can't, I can't live with a zero setback."
Right, so I, I'm not gonna get into individual applications, I'm just letting you know, I, I don't have a problem on legislative stuff with you guys trying to say, "This is for better Tarpon Springs," but I will tell you from a legal perspective, my job is, especially on quasi-judicial applications, to always step in and say, "Hey, guys, just remember, you've got criteria, I'm not here to make the decisions, you guys have the hard job to do that, I'm just here to make sure that whatever decision you make is, it can be supported, and that it doesn't get overturned should it be challenged at a higher level," so that's my job.
Okay, I'd like to really thank all of the Commissioners and, and all of the staff and, and everybody present, I think we've accomplished some useful things tonight, and hopefully we can carry forward from this point and, and actually make an impact on the way things work in the city of Tarpon Springs. Thanks a lot, everybody, we stand adjourned.
Nice job.